Kids graduated from Taverres High School. November 7th, really exciting thing. All five chambers in the Northeast Lake County are joining together to do honoring the veterans on a breakfast. It's a really, it's the first time all five, East Lake Chamber, Yumantilla Chamber, Eustis Chamber, Melton Door Chamber, and of course, the various chamber. We're all joining together, all be one group honoring veterans. Tickets are available on the website. On our site, it's listed, it's in the email blast. You do need to get tickets in advance. It's gonna be a great time. Veterans are free, they don't have to pay, but all the rest of us do, including myself, and everybody has to pay for the breakfast at one of my receptions. Hope you can join us. And then the very next day, November 8th, we have a ribbon cutting for a new member, a new business in town that relocated from Melton Door, Florida Lifestyle Realty, they're right across the street from us, from the Chamber office. And then last, our largest event of the entire year, November 15th, is the Taste of Taverres at the Pavilion on the lake. We will have at least 15, and it looks now like we might have 19 restaurants where drink vendors. We're actually gonna use the entire facility, upstairs, downstairs, and the pier, and many business vendors. Tickets are only $35, but they will sell out, so I encourage everybody to get it. It's a fun night up here, a great, great event. Hope you'll all come in, join us there that night. We'll have live entertainment. He played last year, Tyler Haney, he's a local musician who no longer has to play last year, moved to Nashville, and has been working in Nashville. He's come back to play in Florida. Bodart, Marsat, Plastic Surgeons are sponsors, it's a great night. Any questions?
Yes, on the veterans tickets, is it only online, or can we go to the Chamber pick up tickets?
Only online, because it's the combined chambers, and we have limited seats, so it's only online. But I'll be glad to send you the direct link to your email address, because you have to go through two different steps, and I can use it directly.
That'd be great.
I'll send that to Aldo. Okay? Alright, take care.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Alright, moving on to Agenda Item 5, Squareing in My City, Terminating the Closure of Expartic Communications.
Please use the microphone.
I haven't seen that there are any items on the agenda that require the disclosure of expartic communications for Squareing in my city.
Alright, thank you. So we're gonna move on to number six, the reading of all ordinances and resolutions into the record. Susie Novak.
Thank you, Bear. We have one ordinance, our first reading, ordinance 2018-13, an ordinance of the city of Taverres representing the person with a non-possessive property, generally located in South Louisiana Road, East of County, United from planning development, PD to residential handling on and off duty. Subject to the rules and regulations and obligations ordained by the city to resemble providing for separability, providing for effective date. Resolution 2018-23, a resolution of the city of Taverres, Florida, amending the 2018 fiscal year adopted budget for the city of Taverres representing the final amendment to the adopted budget and providing public feeler, separability, and ineffective date. Resolution 2018-24, a resolution of the city of Taverres, Florida, relating to the state to evolving loan program, authorizing SRF-1 agreement WW350951 for the Listation 49, Lake Francis Water Improvement Project, set the loan amount, providing for conflict separability and ineffective date. And a resolution 2025, a resolution of the city of Taverres, Florida, relating to the state's quality and bottom line, program authorizing SRF-1 agreement WW350960 for Lake Francis Water Distribution Impacting Improvement Project, design activities, sets the loan amount, providing for conflict separability and ineffective date.
Thank you, Ms. Novak. Right, moving on to Agenda Item 7, consent agenda. Does anyone in the audience have any questions for any disagreements, with anything on the consent agenda? Counsel?
Motion approved, second.
Yeah, motion of second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero. Moving on down to Agenda Item 8, which is our ordinances and resolutions. Those of you who are here for the TAB 5, I know I've got a couple of y'all who have filled out an form to speak. This is first reading, and we do not discuss on first reading, so please come back in first of December, and it will be on the agenda then, I don't know. Alright, so we're gonna move on to our, there's no second reading, so we're moving on to the general government. TAB 6, board appointments, our police pension boards. Mayor, that's me. Do I have that? Alright, thank you. And these are both on, what else? One's fire and one's police. Okay, so on the fire, the Taverres Fire Pension Board, I would like to reappoint William Stomp. Phil Stomp, he'll continue, if the council is agreement with that?
Yep.
Okay, and then for the police pension board, I would like to appoint to another, two-year term, Arthur Banderst. Y'all are good? Okay, so we have those two appointments, and thank you to both of those people for getting involved and being part of our city. Alright, now we're gonna move on to TAB 7, the mayor's youth council assignments to council members. So those of you who don't notice, we have a mayor's youth council. This is going to be our third year, and we're really excited about this project, and it gets the youth involved, and these are your future leaders. So I get real excited when we get these new students. So this will be 15, after they're done, be 15 students that we've kind of enlightened on the city, and what we do, and the different departments, and so with that, what they do is they fill out an application at their school, and then I believe the teachers or principals, y'all, choose which students can be in this program. So it's an honor to have them, and I hope they feel like it's an honor to be here with us. So with that, what I do is I go through, they give us little resumes, and I study the resumes, and think about our council members, and see which council member to pair them up with, that they could gain the most. So with that, we're gonna start out with, well, we have two councils, we have two of the students who could not make it at the last minute, and that is Litzie Ricardo. And I'm going to assign Litzie to be new council member, who we don't know who that's gonna be yet. They'll be elected on November the 6th, and they'll be sworn in on December the 5th, December the 5th meeting. And so that will be, Litzie will get the new council member. And Bashaka, oh, let me go to the other one that's not here, which was Bashaka. Bashaka Kirby, I'm assigning Bashaka to you, and I think you'll be real good for her, and I'm sure that you'll share some of your knowledge. And then, let's see, Olivia, you're going with Amanda.
I'll meet with you after if I see you, or I'll make sure to get my contact information.
So yeah, so we'll exchange numbers, and that way she'll be able to get in contact with you, you know, at any time. Okay, and then Jaden, Vice Mayor Senator.
I'll work with you.
And then I have Ayesha.
Hi, I'm Vice Sarah.
I know you do, but I like to say Ayesha, because I learned how to say it the first day I met you, and I know you told me that you liked me as Vice Sarah, but I'm so proud that I can say it.
Thank you for having me.
But anyway, so I'll exchange numbers with you, okay? And that way you'll be able to get in contact with me, but there you go. And I would like each of you, quickly, to the three that are here, I'd like you to come up to the podium and say your name and what grade you're in. So whoever wants to go first, the three of you, y'all learn how to come up and speak.
Hello, everyone. My name's Olivia James.
Get up, get up closer to my phones.
I'm 15, and I go to Taverres High School, and I look forward to seeing how our city government works.
Alright, thank you, Olivia.
Hi, I'm Sarah, I went to Taverres High School, I'm 17, I'm a senior, and thank you for having me. I look forward to seeing how our city works. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jaden Jackers, and I'm 17, I go to Taverres High School, and I'm excited to be on the mayor's youth council.
Alright, thank you, guys. Before this is over with, you're gonna be professional or something like that. Alright, well, good job, and welcome, welcome to the Taverres Mayor's Youth Council. Okay, now we're gonna move on to TAB 8, which is the lease agreement with Jones Brothers Seaplane Adventures.
Go ahead, we're gonna have Mr. Smith abstain from this voting, as he has a conflict, I'll have him read it into the record.
Mayor, I have a conflict, and I may be the building contractor working on a build-out of the property, so I will be moving the chair, hold my hand there for the discussion.
Alright, good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Madam Council for the record, Bob Tweedy, Economic Development Director. As you all know, Jones Brothers Seaplane Adventures is our base commercial seaplane provider here down at the seaplane base. They've been in business here since 2010, and we've enjoyed a very good working relationship with that company. They started out as a small, part-time, weekend-only operation back in 2010, providing some sightseeing flights and a limited amount of flight instruction. They've grown quite a bit since then. They've added quite a bit of flight training activity, designated pilot examiner services, and Part 135 FAA, Part 135 air charter taxi operations. So they've grown tremendously in that time. They've been leasing a limited amount of space in our terminal building, our prop shop building, 143 square feet of enlarged closet space is what I call it. So their needs have grown with the growth of their business. And so we've worked with them over the last month or so to identify some space that'll suit their current needs. And that space is within what we call the Trailhead Building, I think everybody's familiar with that, down in Loop Park, right in the center of the park, large covered slab with a couple of enclosed partitions in the center. So we've worked out an agreement, terms and conditions for the lease of that space, which they need to put some significant dollars into improvement. And we're gonna just go through some of the terms and conditions here, and I think Mr. Curry distributed to you an outline summary of that. And so they're gonna lease 512 square feet combined space that they're gonna improve. They're also gonna do some extra improvements. The adjacent 1,590 square, six square feet of common area space will remain common area space. And we're, you know, suggesting and requesting a lease term of 10 years for their investment in the capital improvements. The lease rate will be $7,465 per year for that space, 10-year period. They expect to be completing their renovations under the terms of this agreement that we're proposing within a year. I think they'll get it done a lot quicker, but we're gonna give them a year to complete those improvements. They will need to set up plans and specifications that are acceptable to us and permissible, at which time we'll move forward and complete the improvements. So those are the kind of highlights of the terms and conditions. And what we're asking the council at this point is, we'd like you to provide staff authorization to move forward with the agreement, for the city attorney to approve, and subject to the city attorney's approval, execution by the city administrator. Be happy to answer any questions you may have, and I might add, I've got Rob Galloway here, the proprietor of Jones Brothers, to answer any questions you may have as well. So, Madam Mayor, back to you.
Counsel, do you have any questions for Mr. Tweedy, or for Mr. Galloway?
I don't know exactly who the question would be for, but huge fan of Jones Brothers. We're so delighted to have y'all here, glad to see that you're moving out of the closet and upgrading into a much larger space, so we're very happy about that. It's the America's Seaplane City, Jones Brothers fits right into that. I do have a question regarding the capital improvements. Now, can you explain to me exactly how the capital improvements are gonna work? Is this completely from Jones Brothers, the city? Something like that? So Jones Brothers will be, at their expense, completing the improvements. They need to do things like new doors, flooring, air conditioning, insulation, walls, all those sorts of things, painting, both interior and exterior, and not just the enclosed spaces, but they're actually going to paint the overall structure, the exterior, and enhance the look. So those are kind of the highlights of it, it'll be entirely at their expense. So we're leasing unimproved space at a market rate that's consistent with unimproved space in the area. So this is comparable to unimproved space in the Lake County area? Or are they not receiving any type of discount, or are they intending as far as to do the improvements? Of course, my concern is, you know, you have a city council member who had to excuse himself from this vote, so I do have a little bit of concern about that, so I didn't know if there was any type of bid process that could be, that this could be approved, since it's... They're completing improvements at their expense, so it's their contract. We're simply leasing the space to them, which very commonly done in the commercial market, strip malls and office space, that, you know, the tenant would do their own improvements at their own expense, and landlord is simply, you know, leasing the space. We're just approving, and any landlord would approve the improvements, to make sure that it's gonna be compatible, and that there's not gonna be any long-term issues, because we're gonna own those improvements after they, they won't ever, but if they do, they will. A long time. Okay, that was, you know, my main concern was that question.
And how tall I can move?
I'd like to make the motion that we approve the terms and conditions that are set forth.
Motion of second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, three to zero.
Thank you.
Alright, moving on to TAB 9, Shirley Shore's Hidden River Lakes Development Settlement Agreement.
Yes, just a quick update on this. The parties did litigation for the Hidden River Lakes Development, last week, mediation. The parties did come to a conceptual settlement agreement, terms of the settlement agreement currently being interacted and worked out through the attorney. And when that settlement agreement is in its final form, where the petitioner and the developer have signed it, then the settlement agreement will come before the council for review, for letting, and for potential approval. And action is required at this time. This is an update you on the process, and you can expect at your December 5th meeting, the agreement for your review.
Alright, we're moving on to TAB 10, Amendment 2018-23, the final FY 2018 budget amendment to the adopted budget for fiscal year 2018. Lori Houghen.
Good evening, Mayor, and Madam Council. Before you deny is Resolution 2018-23 that amends fiscal year 2017-18. This provides the final amendment for the operating budget year. The resolution represents increases and decreases to the adopted budget for fiscal year 18. Appropriation increases represent capital projects, prior year project encumbrance rollovers, and also transfers between accounts. Resolution before you amends the budget to $69,506,822, and I'll just state, that seems so high, because that includes the project for the, of the safety facility. The options before you are to approve Resolution 2018-23, amending the 2017-18 fiscal year operating budget, or not to approve.
Counsel, any questions for Ms. Houghen?
Motion approved.
Motion of second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero. Moving on to TAB 11, Resolution 2018-24. Lori Houghen, that you again.
The request before you is for the council to approve Resolution 2018-24, which authorizes the mayor to execute loan documents with the Department of Environmental Protection, often known as FDEP, for safety of all these loan funds. This is for Project 350951, which provides improvements to Listation 49 and Lake Francis. This is for wastewater distribution and listation improvements. This is loan number two for the Lake Francis project. Previously, the council approved Loan 350950 on April 14, 2016, in the amount of $20,000. This provided funding for a facilities plan for the project, and I think you all were given a copy of that, so you can look over that later if you'd like to familiarize yourself more. And some of the items that have been previously approved by this board concerning this project was, there was also an amendment approved on May 15, 2018, which extended the, or October 18, 2017, which extended the timeline to May of this, of 2018 for that study. Then we came back on November 1, 2017, and the council approved Resolution 2017-11 that authorized a loan application and the facilities plan for the project. The resolution before you, 2018-24, as I previously stated, authorizes the mayor to execute loan documents for loan number 350351. The amount of the loan is $6,653,450. Family annual debt service payments are estimated at $179,743. This is based on a borrowing rate of 25.7%. The loan term currently in the agreement is for 20 years, but staff will be working with the department to extend that to 30 years. If we're able to do that, we'll bring that back to the board. That reduces the family annual loan payments, and the rate is so low, we need to do that. The dispersible amount for the loans could change once this project goes out to bid. Once it goes out to bid, it comes back to this board, this board approves that bid, resend it to Tallahassee. Tallahassee decide, if they also approve it, and then they may or may not decide to increase or decrease the loan based on that bid that's approved by this board. So the options before you tonight is to authorize Resolution 2018, which authorizes the mayor to execute SRF loan document 350351 in the amount of $6,653,450, or not to approve to Resolution 2018-24. If you have any questions on the project, Phil can fill you in on that, and we also have the lead engineer, Lisa Ray, with Jones Edmonds in the audience as well.
Alright, Counsel, do you have any questions for the parties that are here in reference to this?
If I could, I'd just like to get a little brief synopsis of the project. Okay, thank you, Mayor and Counsel. This has been in the planning stage for close to 10 years. The pipes in the ground at Lake Francis are probably the oldest in any development in the city. They are with old, outdated materials, they are at the end of their life. On the sewer section, some of the, you understand gravity, and some of the gravity pipes in Lake Francis, it's level. So a lot of maintenance goes into there, so some of the oldest pipes are there, they're clay pipes. We have to go out weekly to clean lines to keep from sewer overflows. We have several breaks a year. There are pipes that are less, are right out of foot, very, and it's just in need of replacement, and that's on the sewer side. On the water side, it's old glued bin wall pipes, they don't even know if they can make that anymore. We respond to between two and four main leaks a year. It is also, all the service lines are the old poly, black poly, which is a part of today's product. All of that stuff is at the end of its shelf life. One of the main things in Lake Francis, when they plotted Lake Francis, it looks like a half a wagon wheel. At one time, when they originally plotted it, there was a road, I forget the name of the road, but it's in Figure 3.2. What is the name of that road? Anyway, they didn't make the road, so they built houses, but they had already put the infrastructure in. So there's about eight houses that sit on an eight-inch water main out there. And off of that eight-inch water main comes many two-inch lines to feed other houses. There are cases out there where maybe a service line in one house breaks, and we have to put 50 people out of water while we isolate that break. So part of these improvements would be to improve our abilities to isolate different areas. Maybe lastly, it would improve the flow to give them a fresher product inside of Lake Francis, connected to Lake Francis, and by getting too far in by...
I'll just state that the one before you is solely for the wastewater portion, which is the listations of the collection lines. Phil has been, has provided you with a synopsis of both loan applications that we're bringing to you tonight, which include water and water.
I think from a big picture, it's a good question, what is the project? The water lines and sewer lines are half a century old, five years old, so some of the clay brick collars around the sewer areas are leaking, so we have infiltration of rainwater into the sewer lines, which go to our plant. So the goal is to replace an antiquated sewer system and water system with a modern one that doesn't have infiltration and leaking. There's a little bit of odor issue out there, because the lines are flat, sewer sits in the lines, and so we'll get complaints at City Hall about cleaning and flushing the lines out on a pretty regular basis. So this project replaces the entire, really, water and sewer lines are 50 years old in the Lake Francis subdivision, with new, modern sewer lines. At the end of the day, we're cleaning up the environment, we're getting rid of odor issues, and we're lowering our maintenance costs, and we're doing it with an SRF low-metre loan, is sort of the big picture of what we're doing.
What's the project's budget? Possibly, do you know how long the project will take coordination?
With shovel this ground about a year.
That's all I have to say.
I'm gonna go off of Troy, I mean, I said the length and duration, but what's the communication gonna be like for residents, and do you see any impact to the ingress and egress of while you're repairing up the streets?
Well, there'll certainly be inconvenience. I went, probably two years ago, and I think Brad went before me, to the HOA. I've already reached out to the HOA, so I will be communicating with the HOA and the residents in there before hearing and then wrap up.
So you're gonna give the heads up before...
Absolutely, they'll know everything. Now, yeah, they will be inconvenienced, but they will be able to get, somehow, get to their home.
That's fine. Motion approved.
Motion of second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero. Resolution 2018-25.
Yes, some of the information from the prior request also applies to this... Yes, some of the information from the prior request also applies to this request, so I'll go over it a little quicker for you. This Resolution 2018-25 was before the council requesting approval to authorize the mayor to execute loan documents again with Florida Department of Environmental Protection, FDEP, for an SRF drinking water project, project number 350960, to provide designed funding for Lake Francis water distribution piping replacement. This will be loan number three for the Lake Francis project. And of course, previously, as stated previously, there was my sense council had approved, and in addition, we just approved the wastewater portion, Resolution 2018-24. Again, this Resolution 2018-25 authorizes the mayor to execute the loan documents. The loan will be in the amount of $77,400. It will be semi-annual loan payments of $4,377, and the borrowing rate is 2.01 percent. The loan term is 10 years. Staff does not anticipate this time because of the small amount changing the loan term on this loan. Again, the other loan documents approved were the $20,000 and the one just previously approved for $6,653,450. I would like to say that this is for design only. We will be, we do have an application queue for the water portion. We don't know when we will bring that back to you, but we assume it will be in the very near future for the construction portion. We anticipate that loan application to come, or loan to come before you for about $500,000. I'm saying that's a ballpark figure, so please don't hold me to that number. But when we get that, we'll bring that back to you, and our goal is to have them both pretty close at the same time when we're doing this project. Again, the options to council is move to approve Resolution 2018-25, authorizing the mayor to execute SRF loan 350360, loan documents in the amount of $77,400. This includes the capitalized interest portion, and again, this is with FDEP, or the other option is not to approve.
Right, council? Questions? No questions.
All right. I'm just wondering why the previous loan, we were able to get that at 0.57 percent, and this loan is at 2.01 percent?
The general reason for that is there are two separate funding agencies. You have the wastewater portion, and you have the drinking water. One entity may get their funding early on, where they can loan it at a lower rate because they received it early on. If they've just received this money, this is new money on the drinking side, which is our assumption, that will often be the reason why the rate is higher, where you have two competing.
Is it possible when this is, if that rate is reduced, or is this a set rate?
When we come back to you with the additional $500,000 for the construction portion, it's possible that it will be lower, but it's highly unlikely that the 2.01 for this portion will increase.
Can you tell me a little bit why we would have a loan for this small amount instead of just budgeting this amount?
Yes, that's a good question, Vice Mayor. A lot of, when we, there's a queuing system for the Florida Department of Environmental Services in getting the funding for these loans. And you want to make sure your application and your funding is in queue. So if you get a small piece first, you're pretty 99 percent sure, have a sure bet of getting the construction portion. Because their funding is doled out based on when they get their funding from the federal side of things.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman.
I just want to make sure that the public knows, this is also, we also have our rate consultant, and he's covering everything we've done.
That is correct, and that's a good question, Harvey. We did, we have, went over extensively with all the projects with the rate consultant. We bring our rate study back to you this coming next few months. You will see this project is included in the recent. It has in the past and in the future.
Move to approve.
Motion second. If you have a question, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, four to zero. Moving on to agenda item 10, old business. Any old business?
I may have old business.
Right.
All right, so I don't know if this is old business, new business. This old business, we talked about it two or three years ago, about the Frenchover complex and the school board purchasing that piece of property at fair market value. We all know that the school board can't afford the money all upfront, so I was thinking, maybe we can ask staff, we can come up with a good scenario where we could sell the property to the school board over time, 20-year note or 10-year note. That way, we could start working on our Woodley field and get it up to par, and the school would be 100 percent responsible for the Frenchover.
Yeah, I mean, that's pretty interesting to me. That's an interesting way to know about it. And I know we would like to do that property, but what do you all think? Is that something that we would need to bring back and agitimize it?
Yeah, we would go ahead and put it on the agenda, get, use some concepts that might work, and if you approve those, we deliver those to the school.
Yeah, good idea, Councilmember Smith. So yes, so is everybody, we are agreeing that we could put this on the agenda and then bring back? Okay.
All right.
Any more old business? And new business?
This might be new business, it might be old business, just asking that thing is something that we've talked about before. Get a lot of complaints from the lot of residents in regards to these, I guess they're called sign signs, little signs that they see this stuff, the little, the side streets and stuff. And I know that, you know, just a few months back, we had something coming for council that allowed our code enforcement officer to be able to pick these up and dispose of them. I mean, I know that he's doing the best job he can, you know, he's a cool one person, and the police department is doing what they can. It seems like, you know, when he picks these up, we seem to have some habitual offenders that as soon as they get picked up, they get put right back out there. And I don't know if there's anything that we can do to strengthen our ordinance, or give the police department or code enforcement officer something more that he can do when he has these people, just keep putting these signs out there.
We can craft a stronger ordinance that imposes penalties on the offender. I think Chief came across a pretty strong one in.
Jacksonville.
Jacksonville. They had the same issue, people were ignoring it. It didn't, it wasn't working very well, so they came up with a stronger ordinance, where there's a defense, I guess a hundred dollar fine, first offense, 200 to the second, and 500 to the third. What we can do is work with city attorney, develop a framework first, bring it to you for your conceptual approval. And if you are good with that, then we would do the ordinance, do the two readings, and implement, basically, an officer can go to the offender and give him a hundred dollar fine, is the way it works. We do not have that at this time. And if that's the direction the board would like, we can bring back the model ordinance that does that, and have you all look at it and bless it, and we bless it, we can go through the public notification process.
About eight or 10 years ago, I specifically remember us going for this. Do you remember, John? I would even pick up signs and just pile them up in front of the door. Didn't we do something then?
We passed a ordinance that made it illegal to put sign signs through the land development code process, which is different than the citation process. Chief, you can help me on the difference.
Yeah, the ability for us, as opposed to, you code enforcement, you have a cure in a rainy period, or you have a chance to fix it, there's a 14-day or 10-day cure. This will allow us to issue a citation, depending upon discretion and the situation, be able to issue a citation like any other municipal offense, right off the bat, puts a little more hammer in it, and addresses that. There was also a discussion too, I don't hold me to this, but there, the council also addressed having signs in the byway, can't do any content related in accordance with Supreme Court rulings, that we basically said no signs in the byway, so we're not into content. So those are the two things I think in the past that I can, personally, regards to that.
I just remember it being quite an issue, I mean, they were just all over.
Yeah, they're.
And it's still, and then it kind of let up, remember, we used to, I think you even have, we would just pick them up, we all would pick them up when we saw them, because they were so bad, and then I think we just moved on, and they were gone for a while, now they're all back and forth.
It's basically litter on a stick.
I would like to say that I would like this to be for habitual offenders. I mean, some guy going out and putting a sign in and not knowing, getting a hundred dollar fine in the digits.
We could do a warning.
Yeah.
And then if the warning is not adhered to, then it'd be 100, then 200, then 500.
Yeah, I think right now, what I see is, I think, I see our code enforcement officer going around picking these signs up, and then within an hour, you'll see the exact same sign put in the exact same spot.
Well, they know where we put them, they go right back here and pick them up and go put them right back out. They pick up the same signs, and they do. Because they're just back here by the sign building, they just do them.
Yeah, my concern is you're habitual offenders.
Right, and we also understand we have our city and county very quickly, click it, tick it, sniff it signs. I don't know who's doing that, but that would fall under this ordinance, it's falling under our court order. I don't know who's putting them out, but I don't know if it's county, or us, or who, but they all fall under the same order.
Okay, so we're all in agreement, again, that this is.
I'm probably getting a little bit of a framework to go with it.
We'd like to bring back. Okay, right. Yep. Okay, any more, I don't even remember where we are. Is there any more?
Hold it there.
Okay. We're going to move on to, to Ms. Burley, do the, the audience to be heard. And that doesn't mean Ms. Burley is the only one that can be heard, she just, we always let her be first, so.
Betty Burley, 214 North Manhattan Giraffe. Two council members were absent from the November 2, 1994 meeting of the Tavaria City Council, but the remaining three, four, Edwards and Miller constituted a quorum and conducted business as usual. The trio approved development of a small public recreation park in Oak Haven subdivision, and agreed to a year's contract with Farmer Barley and Associates to provide the city's general engineering services. The council also clarified the August 3 annexation of approximately 85 acres of land at the southwest corner of County Road 561 and lane part cutout, and approved a resolution for the change of non-conforming use of the property at the end of Dora Ave and Lake Dora Drive, on which currently exists a dilapidated dock. This resolution changed the use of the property from that of a commercial marina and bait shop to a private marina and accessory structure. The site has not been in operation on, operation for a number of years, and the dock structure was recently condemned by the city. Under this resolution, the property owner has 45 days from November 2 to begin renovation of the dock. And this property was owned by my brother-in-law back in 50, and he had a bait shop, and he rented boat sets. And I think he sold it sometime in the 70s.
Thank you, Ms. Burley. Anyone else in the audience would like to be heard? Mr. Van Shyokum?
Van Shyokum, 12619 Milwaukee. Very quickly about the issue of the night signs. I don't know whether it was here or somewhere else the issue came up, and they talked about using a war tiger software, which is, you just hit the number off that sign, and you just send them 100 automated calls, and maybe you make speeches on it, and other things to fill up the recorder, and they end up turning it off. And I would explain on there, because in half the cases, some, of course, retailer who has been sold a service, and they are doing that, but that's one way to, I think, stop it really quickly. The other thing is that the shores issue was on the agenda, and I know you're going to discuss that later, but it brings up an issue that I've seen a trend, which is that cities in this county, and probably other counties, are getting into conflicts with retirees and rural residents about the rules and ignoring the rules. Fruitland Park is, had a very big resistance movement by the new expansion of the villages in that area, because they almost doubled the size of the Fruitland Park. They ran up their, they weren't going to have a rollback tax, and they were going to cash in, they were going to build things. They put expensive furniture in a budget for a library, a lot of things. Well, the two budget, first budget period, so many people showed up, they had to cancel it and postpone it to a church, to hold more than 150 people. Then they, those people, and most of them came from other areas, and actually, there was a comment made, signs like Van Shyokum showed up, 100 of them, because these were people that worked, like I did, in very large sophisticated companies, and they came in, they analyzed the budget, they went through all sorts of things. And they just, and they even went to the county board, and they went to the Lake County Water Department, and complained about the taxes and about the issues, and they analyzed them, and just tore them apart, because there's this big difference between the city Fruitland Park, just like this city, and trying to develop downtown area, and then looking at annexation as a way to gain more money to fund private projects, or, you know, projects downtown. Well, they were such an issue that even two years ago, on this building, they re-drew the boundaries on Fruitland Park. They now have district required boundaries, and two of the five councilmen were bumped, and the two new councilmen are coming from the villages section in Fruitland Park in the November ballot. I met both of, probably the winner and the other winner. And there are videos, just by chance, up on my YouTube channel. Now, the other thing is Clermont. They went out and they ignored their own rules, and they ignored people complaining about charter school being built, even the school district, and it was in the paper, and it's going to be on two TV channels. They ignored those rules, and they went, had approved a charter school, five acres of land, I won't reveal the details, but they aggravated.
Does this have any, anything to do with us?
The issue is, the issue is, the trend that cities ignoring the people that come in and give public input, and then you make a decision that's related to or explaining what we might call the downtown interests, and the people on the outside are starting to raise a lot of attacks. So that's my point, is maybe precautionary in the future, in some of your decisions.
Well, thank you, I'm fairly proud of how, I mean, we're very transparent, and we listen to everyone that comes up here. So thank you. Has anyone else in the audience like to be heard? Are you coming up, or are you leaving?
I would never.
Do you think I'm going to sit here listening to you and not speak for long? Mayor, members of council, Mr. Drury, city administrators, the city attorney, Gary Santoro from Royal Harbor. My comments are brief. Election Day is Tuesday. None of you are up for election. You've already been reappointed, and I congratulate you for that. And that says a lot for what you're doing. And I'm sure if Mr. Greene was on the ballot, he would have been reappointed by acclamation. So what does that tell you? You're doing something right. And I congratulate you for doing something right. And with that, leave the mayor and the vice mayor alone. I know people will say, well, I deserve a chance. It's not what you want, it's what the people want. And the people put you there to do what you need to do for the city. I know sitting in one of these seats out here, it used to be anxieties like, who's going to be the mayor as things change? The only comment that I'm there, is you have Mr. Drury. Good man. You know, the staff reports to him, and he takes direction from you. But I ask you to consider, you have a whole month to think about it, leave Ms. Mester and Mr. Singer alone, leave them in their position. You've done, you've done an all right job now, don't rock the boat, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Santoro. Anyone else in the audience? Okay, we're going to move on to. Okay, we're gonna move on to reports. Mr. Gary.
Just, we have a performing arts center workshop at the pavilion at five o'clock. For those of you who are interested in learning a little bit about the future of performing arts in our downtown entertainment district, and looking at the different concepts and where it might be located, that meeting or workshop starts at five o'clock at the pavilion on the lake. And for those who attend, you're welcome, we'd love to have you there, we'd love to hear your input. That's it.
Suzie?
Thank you, nothing there.
Chief?
Nothing there.
Mr. Pity?
Nothing there.
Jay?
Nothing there, thank you.
Nothing there.
Lauren? Chief?
Mayor, yes, just briefly, you know our public safety chaplain, Scott Hendridge. Just a little, two weeks ago, he and his mother had gone to a nice evening out at Fort Worth Opry. They were headed home, show was over, and they were in a bad automobile accident, so Ms. Billy's mother is in very bad shape, she's up in the trauma center in Ocala, and Chaplain Scott has been transferred to Edgewater. So just keep in mind your thoughts and prayers, good luck to the residents, and, you know, we love Chaplain Scott, so, thank you.
Lauren?
Thank you, nothing there.
Mike?
Nothing there.
Counselor? Amanda?
Thank you for telling me about Scott, I'll definitely tell him after I leave. And we appreciate him, and he runs, helps run the shelter, whenever there's a roof and sheltering. But I had a great time at Boot Fest, and I was ten this year, because I'd like to request to be nuzzled in again next year. It was a lot.
Councilmembers, now?
So the seaplane flying in was absolutely fantastic. The weather was, was perfect. If you, if you happen to have missed it, don't miss the next one, because it is kind of neat to see, to see all these planes come in in different styles. And the pilots like to see the people out there, and they'll tell you, they'll show you their planes, and they're all excited about it. So if you have an opportunity to go to one of these things, I would highly encourage that. Also, I was driving down the road last night, and I drove by our eco park at night. If you have not driven by the ecological park at night, do yourself a favor and drive by there. It is absolutely stunning, the way that thing looks. What a beautiful park, and a good job done on that, because you got the grass mowed, and the lights are all working, and the fountains are lit up, and it's absolutely gorgeous. And it's cleaning up our waterways while we're, while we're looking good. In case you were wondering, today is National Vinegar Day. And on this day, in seventy-nine, the people of Pompeii had arrived at Mount Vesuvius, and they became famous. That's all I have there.
Thank you, Senator.
Yeah, I just wanted to say what a great time I had at Boot Fest as well, sorry that the camera's not here, but I'm sure I'll see you in a short time over at the pavilion. The one thing that I really liked about Boot Fest, well, you know, everything was great, but it was really neat seeing all the different departments represented there. You know, you had the fire department, you had the police department, you had wastewater, you had public works. It was just really cool to see them all set up. And then the other thing I liked to see was the scarecrow contest thing that was put on by the friends of the library. And it was really neat to get all the community involved in that. Hopefully, next year, we'll be able to get a lot more people involved in that, so, great job on helping out with that and Burley, so.
Don't forget the seaplane, the seaplanes in the road.
Oh, yes, the seaplane in the road.
Seaplane in the road.
Yeah, okay, where else can you have that other than America's Seaplane City? Thanks for doing a program for that. It was really cool. And where's that for work, seeing, you know, the entire staff taking everything down? It amazes me still to see when we have a wonderful event like that, and how quickly they can get things back to, and you would never know the next day, what event took place down here. And, you know, just, you know, thank everybody for all that they did for that. I want to remind everybody that there's the movie in the square coming up November sixteenth, that's always a neat event, I think they're starting that, right when the sun goes down, and the leadership would be great for that, so hopefully, we'll be able to, everybody will be able to make it out for that. Just want to say again, just so excited about having the mayor's youth council back again for its third year, looking forward to that, wonderful program. Did want to just touch on a couple of quick things regarding the mayor's youth council. When they first started about four years ago, I could tell that they really needed a hand with their public speaking. So we were able to put something together and work with local coastmasters club, and you might want to go ahead and put this on your calendars, but I'm pretty sure that we're gonna say the same thing, we're gonna have a program here for the mayor's youth council members that are able to attend on January thirty, probably around one o'clock, one thirty, and they get out of school, so that'll really help with your public speaking, because that's a really important thing that you really need to work on. Another, another thing on your syllabus, it does say about outside, attend at least two outside council events, I know we're cutting your groundbreaking, I encourage you that if you can do more than two, I know it says two the minimum, but the more that you participate in that, I think you'll really get a lot of that, so make sure you get your mayor council member, and you'll be to the dates and times for a lot of those events. And then, of course, you know, we have the mock meeting at the end of the year, which is a really great time, so make sure you pay attention to what the council members up here do, and you'll be doing that at the end of the year, so it's a really exciting thing. And just want to wish everybody, I can't believe I'm saying this, a happy Thanksgiving, because we won't see you back here until...
Until December.
Until December. And we will also have the Christmas parade before we come back to the council meeting, so, everybody have a wonderful Thanksgiving, and we will see you here next month.
Yeah, and we're not done yet. A couple of things. First thing, Ms. Pauling, could you give up and introduce yourself, and both of you who are inside your capacity, because that's important.
Oh, yeah, I'll try. And I'm Kim Collins, I'm a guidance secretary at Tiberius High School. My daughter was on this council her first year, and it's amazing, it's wonderful for the resume, the experience. My daughter wants to be an architect, she got here with a job, yeah, and he did planning and zoning, and it's just, it's a wonderful experience, we appreciate y'all always having us. And this is our first year new assistant principal, Jennifer Hornsward, and again, thank you so much, brothers, for the shift with Tiberius High School, and you're gonna have a good year, girls. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And then we also have the middle school. Is this the avid program, or which program do we have here today, or?
It's, it's student government.
Student government, well, how about introducing yourselves and just, yeah, that's important here, so.
Hi, I'm Tabitha Thompson, with Tiberius Middle School, and we're here with student government and the youth court program we have at Tiberius Middle School. We want to see how government function down at a level and show them how things work. We've been at the Lake County courthouse this morning, we did talk to our students.
Well, good, yeah, this is definitely, they learned that it's not all waiting and kissing babies, and we talked about, we talked about sewers and everything else today, and that's, we do more of that than there's riding parades, I can promise you.
And then, these are the youth court members.
I'm Jeff Koenig, I teach youth history, a few of the students are mine, but I also really see a lot of her court meetings, and Ms. Cook and I alternate, and I hear cases from around the school, and mostly the students are doing the work, but we facilitate them, helping students make better choices, and trying to help their peers, you know, have more of the influence, because we talk about it all the time, but coming from, you know, coming from them means a little bit more, so.
And I'm Kelly Cook, and I'm with youth court, but I'm also the avid teacher, and we are represented by some avid students, parents, and past parents as well.
I remember coming to speak to avid before, and, well, congratulations, I'm glad that you brought them in, I'm glad they got to experience this, and all of y'all, make sure you know that when you get in high school, you can apply to be on the mayor's youth council also, so you're getting room for that, so get ready. And thank you, thank you, thank y'all for what y'all do, thank you very much. Okay, Boot Fest was great, just like it always is. I also am gonna remind y'all, and same thing with you students and mayor's youth council, this meeting that we're going to is something that you could go to, this performing arts over at the pavilion, you know, because we've been talking and just trying to figure out if we could have performing arts center in our city, so this is great, this would be very informative, and you may have some ideas too, so y'all are very much welcome to go over there to that. Same thing with everyone else up in the audience. Don't forget to vote, exercise your right, for sure. And with that, without further objection, this meeting is adjourned.